So it's 6:02. I'd like to open up the meeting. We're still waiting for a couple of people to arrive. Hopefully they will. So the first item on the agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda at all?
I don't have any.
Okay, I have one. I made a pretty big mistake at the last meeting with Laura's pay scale. So I'd like to correct that at this meeting, and I thought maybe we could do it during the treasurer report.
Okay.
To do it there. So that's the only adjustment I have. Any public comment at all? Maybe from any of the other folks that have joined?
Hey, Michael, do you see this phone number?
Uh, yes. Except some of the number, some of the number is not visible to me. There's a bunch of, there's four asterisks as part of it.
Yeah, so.
It's Diana, I believe.
Well, let's let her in.
Yes, having to call in.
Okay. Could the caller who just entered the meeting identify themselves? Could the caller that just entered the meeting identify themselves, please?
Susan Martin.
Susan Martin. Okay, thank you, Susan. So Susan, I just want you to know that we are not going to be taking up the zoning application revision till, you know, close to around 7:30, maybe quarter after 7:00. Okay, you're fine? Okay, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
That's fine. Can you, can you see me or?
No.
No, okay, I can't see you guys either, so.
Um, are you, are you on a computer or are you on the phone?
I'm on my cellphone.
Okay, is it an iPhone or?
Yeah.
Okay.
But you would have had to enter through the app to be able to see.
Right, you have to, you have to have downloaded the Zoom app in order to be connected. You're okay?
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with this, yeah.
Okay, so, um, one thing that, um,
We got one more.
Okay. Uh, that's, that's the town office, I believe. Probably Diana. Diana?
Hello?
Okay. So, um, for those of you that are on the phone, when you're not speaking, can you press star six? That'll help the audio quality of, of the meeting. And then when you wish to speak, press star six again and let us know that you would like to speak. And then when you've finished, and then when you finish, press star six again. Okay, uh, let's see. So no public comment, I assume. So, um, so I would make a motion that we approve the bills to the town.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then I would make a motion that we approve the minutes to the April 13th select board meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll have those minutes down in the town office tomorrow morning for us to sign. So, um, let's have the town treasurer report now.
Alrighty. So, the balance sheet, financial statement due to, due from, and, um, also I had left virus hours for the select board
I saw, yeah.
to review. Over the last two weeks for cash receipts, I took in $730 for prepaid taxes. Delinquencies was $2,087.82. We also received electronically into our bank account from the state of Vermont for the reappraisal fund, which was $7,565 even. And also from the state of Vermont for the class two and class three roads, which was a total of $17,965.80, which is split between the class two and class three road. There was no need for a transfer. So the other thing was, I just wanted to make sure that the mowing contract was signed by the board.
Yes, it did get signed.
Okay, perfect. So I'm gonna scan that and bounce that back to Derek, so he has a copy. The other thing that I want to, um, mention is that, in our checking account, we had cut the check back in November for the old store. And it has not cleared the, the checking account. I did issue a 1099 for 2019. So that being said, I'm gonna have to contact the state and figure out how to do that, that retraction from 2019 for that 1099.
Did that check ever get sent to one of the property owners, or did they just never pick it up?
Diana sent it, um, so they just emailed.
Okay, okay, just wondered, yeah. Uh, so, yeah, so, um, how do we move forward with that? I mean, we can't, obviously they have to do something with the check before, you know, the book is closed on that.
Right.
And I know that they've.
I did put a call into Sarah Field, and I have him back into the office to check messages. But I'll be going in tomorrow to make sure I sign off on that, sign the checks and mail out the AP.
Okay. Yeah.
Brandy?
Yep.
Brandy, when was it, when was that check issued?
Uh, November 2nd, I believe.
So I think it says on there that it's good for six months. So we're coming up on six months, huh?
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'll remind the person whose name is on the check.
Did you end up hearing from Sarah Field? No? And I can check, I can check in with you tomorrow. Okay.
Okay.
So I had, I had one thing, I, um, this was from our last, the last meeting that we had when we had a bill for the emergency generator at the school.
Yep.
I had remembered there was a second line item for that generator, and, and I, I found that it's, it's actually for the fuel tank.
Yep.
And, you know, I know we filled it up last year, I can't remember exactly when. But there is a thousand dollars that we budgeted for fiscal year 20. We could use, you know, if we, if we aren't anticipating having to put more propane into that tank, and, you know, we haven't really used it except for the tests that it does. You know, and I don't really know how often the tank would need to be filled and how much it would cost. But we could use, you know, the, whatever the overcost was for the work that was done on the emergency generator, we could take it from there as opposed to the school.
I did the journal entry and moved it from the school, and that item line covered it all.
Okay, great.
There was no, there was no need for looking, yeah. We're good on that.
Great. Um, is it, is this a good time to talk about Laura's pay, pay scale?
Sure.
Sure, okay. So at the last meeting, I must have read her pay, the check stub incorrectly. I had, was, thought that she was making $15.45 an hour, when she actually is making $14.55 an hour. So, and, and we had given her a bump up on the pay scale according to the personnel policy for fiscal year 21 to $15.01 per hour. And, you know, and then we talked about also pumping up one more notch as kind of a merit raise in the scale, which would bring her to $15.45, not the $16.33, 36 cents that, that we approved last time. I talked to Laura about this today, and she's okay with this change. It was, you know, basically my mistake. And Brandy pointed it out to us. So I'd like to make a change in what we voted on last week and present a motion that we award Laura Daly the pay rate of $15.45 for fiscal year 21, starting July 1st of this coming summer.
No, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, good. I won't depend on my memory so much next time.
That's mine at all.
Yeah. That's pretty much it. I don't have any questions about the financial sheets at all. One, oh, one other question, I just wanted to make sure. When you, I noticed there was a bill for Mountain View Security for the fire alarm system at the town garage. Did, did that get sent to Mountain View, or did it get sent to this new Seacoast Security, who apparently bought Mountain View out? And there, I don't know who's actually dealing with the bills. Do you, do you know who you're gonna be sending that to, Brandy, the check for that?
Yep, it's to the new owners.
The new owners, okay.
It had gone to the old one, and must be it never got forwarded, or, but I haven't seen it returned either, so I canceled. I did cancel it and have the new address plugged in now.
Okay, great.
Yep.
All right. Anything else, Brandy?
I don't believe so.
Okay, um, Diana, we're, we're set for the town clerk report.
Here, I'm muted.
Okay, good.
Well, my laptop at home sort of froze up all of a sudden, and so I ran down here to the office, and Laura got me signed up here, so I don't have to miss too much.
Okay.
Thank goodness. Um, I did submit the FEMA requisition for the rest of the money, and all that's gonna be left is approximately 7,000 something dollars that we're paying for the final reclamation on the site, the topsoil, and seed and mulch and final grading, so we'll get 75% of that back eventually. But, um, over at VEM, they do have their hands full with other emergency stuff that's going on, so I have no idea how long it'll take, but last time it only took about three weeks. So I need to, we did get an extension to May 30th, and I was a little worried with this COVID thing, that that might not be enough, but now the contractors are allowed to go back to work. I have to get in touch with our guy and make a plan to, uh, get him out here to finish that up. Um.
Diana, I have a question.
Uh huh.
Is there any, um, plans for guardrails or anything around that culvert, around the brook?
I was hoping to talk with, uh, with, uh, Vtrans people when we had our meeting, because it seems like that would be nice, although there's nothing on the other side, but still.
It just, it seems like a, kind of a dangerous open hole there.
Yeah, I, I agree. I have looked at that. And I don't know whether the state will actually come through with replacing those culverts ever or not, but in the meantime, it would seem like at least a Jersey barriers, if not some short piece of guardrail, would, would make some sense.
Right.
So that meeting with Shawna and Jaren is still something that's gonna happen in the foreseeable future.
Yeah, I could offer a little bit about that. I, um, you know, we have a question, we have a question with the culvert right in the village under Valley Lake Road, too. So I contacted, um, Jaren Borg and Shawna Clifford about that. And Jaren emailed back saying that he is no, that Woodbury is no longer in his district, and we're now back in the hands of Patrick Ross. And that they, at, at the moment, they are not allowed to, to do any site visits until May 15th, you know, at the moment. So, kind of waiting. You know, I, I, so I've been communicating mostly with Patrick at this point, and I'd like to have him take a look at that culvert. And also, I mentioned the, the stream. You know, just taking a look at the stream, because we're thinking that with those different blocks, that we may need to do some restoration work there, and Shawna would probably be a part of that. When, the last time I spoke with Shawna, they had an engineer that was, a Vtrans engineer, that was gonna be coming to take a look at the, the culverts that go under Route 14 in the village there, to start, uh, you know, to begin the process of replacing those culverts. But she, you know, she said that, you know, this is the very beginning stage. It would be a FEMA grant that they would be trying for to, to do that work, and that it, you know, it's not gonna happen in the immediate future. So I don't know when, but, you know, maybe within the next three or four, five or six years. It is sort of, it is sort of in the works. They're starting to think about it.
When they, when FEMA took away that part of our funding last year, I think it was August, it was mentioned that there might be other money available from them in the future. So I've asked our VEM people to start looking into that.
Okay.
Possibly that, that there's more money left in that particular pot of money, but.
Okay.
So that would be nice, because that's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, it will be.
Okay, so, on to the rest of the, we've been getting along okay here, doing most of our business by telephone and email. Had a few people stop by for a few things and drop their dog licenses in the drop box, and that's all been getting done. I am gonna start letting people come in by appointment on Tuesdays and Thursdays when, when I'm the only one here, because it's not a problem to keep six feet away if people go into the vault, and we've got all our protective measures in place, our Clorox wipes and all that stuff. Uh, I've only had one, one appointment so far. Otherwise, the days seem to be busy. I don't have anything specific, else specific to report on.
Okay, all right.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
I don't have any, no.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect.
Yes. So, um, on to the town highway report. Um, I, um, just briefly, I have, I got a letter from our lawyer, um, who, just listing the different things that the town sent for the record, for the appeal process. He, Diana and I put that together the day after our last select board meeting, and sent it to Michael Tarrant, the lawyer who's been helping us with this process. And he, um, he sent it into Washington Superior Court, and that's, that's all I've heard about that at the moment, so. But they now have the record of the, which included the minutes, the CD, audio, audio recordings, the record of the hearing notices, some other information that we spoke of during the hearings. And, uh, so the, the court has what it needs at the moment. At some point, we'll probably hear about a court hearing. I don't know when. Um, so next on the, are there any questions about that at all? Okay, so next on the agenda is the Village Street project and the paving RFP.
All right, so I sent you and Brian both a copy of the RFP. I think we gotta work out is the dates of when we're doing what, and
Yes.
who the prospective bidders would be. I put some ideas on there. I'm not sure if there was a, I couldn't find whether there was a requirement for how long. I'm trying to keep the window rather short, because I didn't want to end up where we were last summer, where we were sold.
Right.
It was all done.
I, I looked at the RFP that Skip Lindsey put together for the school roof replacement. And he had, um, you know, the date that the RFP went out was, and then the date that the bids were required to come in a month apart, 30 days, basically.
That's about what I had there, okay.
Yeah, and then, um, the site visit was about three weeks after, after the, uh, the RFP went out.
So I got it at two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
So the question whether you want to extend it to three, and then only have a week between the site visit and the bid opening.
Yeah.
Just again, if we, we put it off, we'll be two more weeks out and put us into the second week in June.
Right. You know, I, I think we would probably be okay. This, you know, this work would happen quite a bit later, you know, depending on when we get the road construction work done.
Yeah, I've got the RFP as a timeframe. They have to get it done before the end of August. Because that was one of the concerns, is getting too cold.
Yeah.
To be doing pavement.
Yeah. Yeah, so Skip had like March 8th for the, the bids to go out, March 21st, which is, um, you know, about 15, two weeks, actually two weeks from when the bids went out.
Okay, that's what I've got, yeah.
Yeah, and then he had a, and then after the, um, the site visit, there was about a week, I think, for questions to be submitted.
Yeah, well, that gives another, well, I've got three days. We could add some time there.
Yeah. And then the bids needed to be submitted approximately 30 days from when.
Yeah, so we're pretty close to that timeframe.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Let's see, I, I'm reading through the, the RFP, let's see, I wrote a few notes. I wonder if, um, in the scope and background, if we just mentioned the length of the section of the Valley Lake Road. This is 1.1.1, the very beginning. It's, um, a qualified contractor to engage paving of the Village Square parking lot and a section of the Valley Lake Road. Maybe just mention the length of the section and the fact that it connects with Route 14, or joining Route 14.
Okay.
Just give a little more information on that. And, yeah, so we'll lengthen out the question and answer period a little bit. So, and you had mentioned.
The dates aren't right in the body of the document.
Right, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not worried about that, yeah, because we, and then in, um, on part two, under the 2.2, the bid opening, you have here that the Woodbury Town Clerk will open the bid and read the name, and, and you know, I'm fine with that.
And that's right directly from what Skip sent, so we can do whatever we want there.
Okay, I know you, my, my experience with opening up the bids is, um, they might have already been open, but the select board usually opens them up, you know, formally at the select board meeting, but it doesn't, either way works.
Usually, so, so my feeling is too, I think we should open them at the meeting, that way if they choose to attend. And that's all we really do at the meeting. We're just gonna open the bids and announce the costs, and that's the end of it for the night.
Okay.
Gives us a week to award, or two weeks early to review the bids and award.
Um, and then, uh, under 2.4, um, the express delivery, I know that some contractors have been kind of screwed up in the past with that. What happens is, you know, whether they send it FedEx or whatever, whatever delivery company they're using, sometimes they'll come and the town office is closed, and they'll leave a sticker on the door. And then depending on, especially, you know, the Thursday, Friday thing, and, and nobody, you know, nobody's at the town office to respond to them, so
Okay.
it might be good to warn them that they use that to send it good and early. There's a phone ringing, and it might be Brian. Let me check it out. Hey, Brian. Um, so. Okay.
Oh, Brian broke his computer.
So Brian should be with us shortly. Uh, let's see, okay, um, I think that was, that was pretty much it.
Yeah, because my thing on the FedEx, that's kind of on that, if they don't get it there in time, your other option is just hand deliver it. I mean, that was the second question. One of the people that looked at it, thought that having the bids, let them be delivered at the meeting. And we have a setup where they have to be in by a certain date. I don't know what our feeling is on that. He said, sometimes with projects this small, they don't want to make the multiple site visits, it's sometimes required, it's not what they're talking.
Yeah, well, they aren't, they aren't required to be at the bid opening.
No, but they could.
They could if they want, of course, yeah.
Because what it has now is the, this would be due um, at a different date than the opening.
Yeah, usually it's like the Thursday or Friday.
So the question is, since we're not opening the bid, do we need to have them that there? Is it okay that we just had to be, uh, we'll either have the bids in hand, or you can hand deliver it?
Um.
I don't have a strong feeling either way, so.
I, I, you know, it doesn't matter to me either. If that's, if some contractors have thought that that would be better for them, I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
So what I'll do is I'll make the bids due at the opening. If they're not there at 6:30 on the night that we open the bids.
Right, yeah, we might want to let them know that they can't show up after we've.
No, I've been down that way before.
I think they can't show up after we opened the bid, so, you know, they have to be, they have to be there before we.
Right, the bid has to be.
The process.
If our bid opening's at 6:30, they have to be there at 6:30 with the bid.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll adjust.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Okay. And then somewhere I made some notes. What, what did I do with it? Here they are. So I just wanted to, um, you know, one of the concerns I have about both the, the roadwork and the paving is that, you know, the whole construction season is totally out of whack with this COVID-19 thing. I think we should make our best effort to, you know, get these RFPs out and try to get, have this thing happen, but, you know, it could just get, um, we could find ourselves not able to do this this year. I think, I think we should just be aware of that. It's kind of an unknown, from what I've been hearing about what's actually, you know, what'll happen for construction work. You know, it's a little bit encouraging in that Governor Scott has opened up the, you know, the, the ability for contractors to begin work. And I got, I got a statement from Vtrans, which I think I sent to everybody, that there are also any Vtrans-funded projects that they are allowing the work to start on those, so that's encouraging. But, um, uh, you know, we, I think we should just be, let's, you know, go for it and, and hope that, but be aware that, you know, that something could kind of fall apart without plans.
My concern, I haven't got the plan back from the engineer. My gut feeling on this is that we should not go out to bid on the road portion, and just go out to bid on the apron, the Valley Lake Road and the parking lot, because they're actually dangerous.
Yeah.
Need to be done, because I have the same problem here you have, is that we're gonna have a difficult time getting the road project out to bid, which I feel like we can get done this summer. But we'll get it done in time where we can actually get it paid.
Right.
Parking lot. That's been my concern right along, so my preference would be to just not bid the paving of the road this year, and anticipate not having it done, and just go ahead and move forward with the parking lot and apron. And anticipate not having it done and just go ahead and move forward with the parking lot and apron. Just so that we can get that done. There's some big holes that are problematic.
Yeah, I think that, that would be wise because there is, you know, and we'll, we'll get to this in a bit, but you know, we had, I think his name is Bud Jones. He lives up in West Woodbury. He's a contractor. He's been helping us a little bit with this parking area and, and for the town forest trail and he came down, he wanted to look at the, the gravel in the road down on Valley Lake Road and, you know, he brought up the question of the culvert, you know, I was talking about our summer plans for paving and it really made me think that maybe we should get, you know, that's when I contacted Jaren.
Right.
We should definitely have somebody look at that and, you know, if they think that we'd have to replace that in a, you know, a couple of years, it probably is worth trying to replace that before we pave the bottom of the valley.
And I share his concerns on the culvert. That's the second reason why I hate to go spend money doing nineteen thousand paving that road and then the following year we have to deal with a collapsed culvert. So my preference would be to just do the apron and parking lot, what's paved now. We'll end up with a cold scene there, which is not a lot to do. We all know the elevations, I'm sure by then of what they need to bring that apron to sort of match the new road elevation or whatever that's going to be.
Yeah.
The back portion. And then we could move forward later this summer with the regrading and the digging down of that road, whatever the engineer has. That'll give us another year to deal with the paving and, and get that resolved.
Yeah, get that resolved. Yeah, wise way to proceed. So what else today? Just, I had some other notes. Let's see what, yeah. Well, those, that was it pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I haven't heard back again from the Better Roads, you know, grant for that roadwork. I think I, the last time I talked or emailed Alan May, he mentioned May first, so I'll wait till May first and if I haven't heard anything I'll send him another email because they, they have to let towns know, I would think. I mean, I think they would have already done that. Who and who didn't receive those grants so that they could do the work of, of hiring contractors or, or whatever to, to get the work done this summer. So we'll see what happens with that part of it. Any, anything else?
What, what I'll do is correct this to just show the road and make those other changes. And I'll fix the dates up. I'd like to try to get this process and get it out the door in the next week or so.
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm fine if, you know, we've talked about the changes and just do it and, and send it out. I don't think
So who usually mails this? Is this something like you give Diana with the addresses?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay, I've never done this before, so I have no idea how it works.
Is that, that's, I think that's kind of what we've done before. I'm, I'm not really sure. Skip has been our RFP person the last few years, so.
What I was going to do is pick three of the contractors and send the bid out to those three and see what we get back.
Okay, and then I think we do, we do also have to post it in, in the local paper.
Okay, I can do that.
Diana would know.
I don't have to do it, right? I can do it if they'll bill the town.
Yeah, I, Diana knows all the rules for that. You know, right at the moment, the Hardwood Gazette is pretty much online only, so I don't know if we want to choose, I don't know what the other newspapers.
Yeah, I don't know. So what I'll do is I'll polish this up for tomorrow or early Wednesday and then send it to you and Brian. You can just review it and I'll try to get it to Diana. I guess she, she can work. If I didn't get it done by Thursday, by Monday maybe.
Okay.
Maybe the Times August would be a better place to advertise.
Okay, yeah, alright.
And is that something you can do, the mailing and the advertising, if I get you the paperwork, Diana?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Somebody's trying to connect here on all this, Brian.
Good, Brian. So anything else about that, the paving and the village project?
Is everybody here? From the, oh, I'm sorry, Greg.
Go ahead, Greg.
Is everybody hearing Paul?
He kind of fades in and out a little bit.
Oh, maybe I'm too far away.
It might be that.
Yeah.
It is better. Alright, sorry about that.
You know, Paul?
Yes.
Another thing is, yeah, you are fading in and out pretty bad. And if you can check your microphone setting. It might be set to automatic and that, that might, that might be making it worse. And if you can set it to manual somehow and just leave it at a certain level. That's what I read anyway, because, yeah, your sound is going in and out pretty bad.
Oh, okay. Like, let me see if I click that. Does that change it at all?
It's good right at the moment.
Okay. Let's see if that works.
Okay.
Alright.
So, sort of related to the project in the village, which is why it's next on the agenda, is the town forest parking area. You know, we've been talking about how much gravel will need to, road gravel, it'll be need to be removed from that area, you know, in front of the annex building. And it just kind of sparked a, a thought in my mind. The parking area. Am I breaking up?
No, you sound good.
Okay. Parking area that, that we have, you know, kind of in the works for the town forest trail. You know, it would be a close spot to the, the excavation of Valley Lake Road for the contractor to dump the gravel. And it would be, you know, a great opportunity to get that done. The, the catch is, of course, is that there would be, there would be some work that would be needed to be done to that area before. We, the Conservation Commission, Paul Council and Jack Travelstead and, and myself met with Bud Jones. He's been kind of helping us think about that area. And we looked at the site, I think it was last week, or maybe it was the week after the last select board meeting. And he estimates, what, what he's saying needs to be done there is that there are some trees that need to be cut and removed. And then there's a small seep stream that comes down where the parking area would be, so that, that area would need to be excavated down. Oh, I guess so that the parking area would slope towards the back of the parking area. And then the stream would be diverted by a ditch around that parking area. And, you know, and then we would fill it in, we'd need to fill in the, what's excavated with six twelve inch stone and then the gravel from the Valley Lake Road could go there. But he estimates it would cost like five to eight thousand dollars to do that. So it's just, you know, it, it, the five or eight thousand dollars hasn't been budgeted in anywhere. Jack thought, well, maybe we could get a grant for it, but we probably wouldn't get a grant for it for this summer. So it's just a thought, I don't, we, we could discuss it a little bit. You know, it's something that if it could happen, it's, it would be great, but it would be a town expense to do the preliminary work. We'd have to hire somebody probably to drop the trees. There's three large pine trees that would need to come down, according to Bud.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the idea of it. I mean, there's probably going to be surplus material that Greg could either use on the road or maybe that's a good place to put it.
Right. One thing that Jack asked, well, you know, could this be stored, the, could the gravel be stored somewhere and then you know, if there was some leftover, could it be brought to use at the site in the future? And I know there isn't much room at the town garage for storing gravel, so.
We could probably find a place.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, it's just a, just a thought. What I want to bring up. And I'm not sure if that's why, Tim. Tim, are you, are you able to, to hear what, what I've just been discussing?
Hi, everyone. No, actually I was interested in the discussion about the Ainsworth Road was why I tuned into the meeting tonight.
Okay, well, we're, we're getting there.
Okay, alright, but I, since you brought that up, where exactly, I was a little unclear about where the proposed parking lot is. Is it, it's down, can you be, can you be a little bit more clear?
Well, I don't know how, how clear I can be in describing it, but were you there when we were looking at a, a previous parking spot? Did, did you, I know we had some different site visit kind of meetings and I'm trying to remember if you were there for those.
No, no, I wasn't.
Well, it's, it's pretty, pretty soon after you get onto the, the farm road. There's a bit of ledge and there's an old it sort of looks like an old cellar hole. There's a, a rusted car wreck right there and, and there was like some old bed springs and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And a bit of ledge that sticks up and we had sort of thought that we would, originally that we would use that old cellar hole, get rid of the junk that's in there and kind of fill that area in. And then when, when this fellow Bud Jones first came and looked at it, you know, he said, well, you're going to have to remove that ledge and he felt that right adjacent to that, headed down the road towards your place, there's kind of a, a wet area. And, and it drains into a culvert that goes underneath the road, just be, just after the ledge if you're headed into your place. So it's right next to that spot that he's thinking of. The, the road just drops down a little bit and then starts, it levels off for a moment before it drops down to get down to Route fourteen. So it's right in that, that short little level section of, of the road.
Okay, well, I, I guess two, 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 two areas of concern. And I think the, the first one has always been a concern that that when folks use the parking lot, that they have the ability to turn back onto Town Farm Road and head back toward the village and not be forced to head over and turn around in our driveway or something similar to that. That would be our main concern.
And that is part, that is part of the thinking behind this, this parking area, that people would be able to turn around in the parking area and not have to drive down and turn around in, in anybody's driveway further down the road.
Right, great. And, and the second one was just, is there any you know, consideration regarding historic preservation with, with the cellar hole there? Is that something we would have to concern ourselves with?
Uh, we had a state archaeologist, you know, look over the forest. He was more concerned about Native American remnants, which he didn't find. He didn't mention the cellar hole at all. And in fact, I'm not even sure if it's a cellar hole. It may be just a kind of a depression that was a convenient area to, to unload some
Some junk.
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me like it's all lined with field stone, as if it was a cellar hole.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, he, the, when the state archaeologist was here, he didn't express any concern, but we could, we could ask that question again of because we had to get, we had to get
I'm not sure.
Kind of a clearance from the, from the state for
I can hear you, Brian.
Oh, you can, okay. I don't know how to get video.
We, we appreciate the no video, thank you.
Almost there.
I don't have to worry about your hair then. I could check into that, Tim, if you like.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
Michael, there might be wise to stake out that area sooner than later, just so if people wanted to take a look at it.
That could be easily done.
Easily done, because that way you can say, hey, it's, there it is. If you don't like it, come comment. Before we did any work there, I hate to do some work and someone's upset by it, they didn't get to just look at it first.
Yeah, good idea. We'll, we'll do that, yeah. Anything else about that at all from anybody? And, you know, one of the other questions we had was, we didn't know whether the road crew could do that work. Not the tree cutting, of course, but the excavating and the bringing in of the stone or whether we would, you know, hire a contractor, but I think what we'll probably try to do is do this through some, a grant. We are, the Conservation Commission is able to go before the same folks that gave us the initial amount of grant money to start work on the trail. Which, which will happen this summer, which, which, just now that we're on that.
Might even be able to get some donated time too, from somebody with an excavator that wants to dig that out.
Right.
May save us some money, so I don't, I think that's a possibility there.
Okay, alright. So let's see. So next on the highway agenda, let me just kind of do a check in on time. Yeah, we're doing okay. So we have to make a decision tonight about what to do for the insurance claim that we have on the forty nine hundred. I did, the woman from Passive did say, you know, allowed us to, to to wait till this select board meeting to make a decision, but they're definitely waiting to and wanting to know what we want to do with that. So, you know, that, to me, right at the moment, for me, it seems that there are kind of two options and there may be, you know, some area in, in between, but we can, you know, we can take the, what we've been awarded for the forty nine hundred, which is about seventeen thousand dollars and use that in whatever way we want. Or we could put in a bid for salvage of the forty nine hundred and, and so far there haven't been any other bidders on the, on the forty nine hundred. We could put in a bid and see if we could use parts from it and buy another used truck and kind of create a new, a new truck out of out of the old forty nine hundred and, and whatever we, we could find to for like a cabin chassis. And I know Greg has some ideas about that. Do you want to share those, Greg, a little bit? Probably can tell that better than I would be able to.
Well, there's several options. I mean, you know, we can maybe find a, I found a two thousand eleven International with blown motor in it. At one point, the, the truck was only two thousand dollars. You know, not that that's going to come by again, but there's, there's lots of options like that that do come by. Just a matter of deciding what, what should happen, or do we just take the money and buy another truck? We need the truck now. I mean, for chloride, we need something to haul the tank around. That's, that's the biggest concern, so we may just want to buy another used truck, truck, a cheaper one or whatever and throw the tank in it and go or I mean, there's, there's several options.
Yeah. You had mentioned that you tried getting the, putting the tank in the five fifty? Would that?
Yeah, again, it's not big enough, you know.
It's not big enough, okay.
The trucks, truck's not heavy enough. It's a thousand gallon tank. You know, but, you know, in a pinch, we could use it two or three hundred gallons of time to, to get us by.
So I had a question, Greg. I, I looked at what Callis and Eastmal Player both use a trailer.
And you, did you talk to anybody?
I didn't, I just they did that. Well, one of the issues I, we've got is we've got a lot of trucks, and so I was just trying to think of why not to have to have so many.
Yeah.
Brian?
Yeah.
Did, did you want to say something?
Uh, no.
Okay, I just, I saw your, the light go around your, your rectangle, so.
Okay, yeah, no.
Okay.
Something flashed there.
I mean, what about the idea of taking this money and using the money from this truck and the sale of the five fifty to replace it with something like the five fifty or, or just a single vehicle from the two, whatever that would look like?
Again, my concern is a chloride tank. You know, having something to haul a chloride tank.
Well, if, if we took, sold the two and tried to get something that was big enough for the chloride tank?
Whatever. I mean, we need, we need something to run around with, too, you know.
What's, what's the issue with having a chloride tank on a trailer? I know you've, you've spoken about that.
You can't turn it around anywhere.
Uh-huh.
You know, it's a pain in the neck to turn them around. And you can't, you can't see your, your spray pattern or any of that.
Uh-huh, yeah.
You know, you're, you're just assuming that it's working fine. If, if something happened, you don't really you know, you can't see back there.
So, okay.
But, I, I mean, a trailer's a possibility, whatever, you know, it's, like I said, it's whatever you guys decide.
Well, well, what do you think of the idea of, you know, taking the insurance money for the forty nine hundred? Selling the five Well, well, what do you think of the idea of, you know, taking the insurance money for the forty nine hundred, selling the five fifty and trying to get um a truck that would be able to handle the chloride tank and and hopefully do the salt work in the, in the wintertime?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know how much something like that's going to cost, you know?
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, we'd have to just take a chance and see what we could find, I guess.
Because for us, looking at the overall replacement costs of everything, if we can not have so many vehicles, it really helps us uh with our annual cost.
We don't, we don't have, Paul, you know, we're, we're pretty limited. I mean, that's our spare truck. If one of the trucks breaks down, we're done.
Well, I I understand that, but we also got to look at what we're spending every year on on vehicles when we replace them, that's all.
It's been really, really handy, not only for the chloride, but as a spare truck. Something with a plow on it because, you know, we never know when something's going to break down and downtimes are, you know, that's what kills us.
Do you, do you have a sense of what it might cost to get something comparable to the forty nine hundred, you, you know, used, of course, that we could set up with a plow?
Yeah, it depends on the condition and quality and all that stuff. I mean, you can buy a cheap one or you can buy a good one, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure we can probably find something.
Yeah. What, what do you think roughly would be the difference between a a good one and a and a cheap one? I mean, let's look at the good one.
Yeah, I, I, you know, they valued that one at twenty thousand, obviously, basically. I mean, they totaled it at twenty or seventeen or whatever.
Right.
So you're looking at that to replace it.
Okay.
And then if we did that, what would we be looking at? Uh, because the five fifty is pretty close to the end of its life, too. Would we be not, not replacing that in a couple of years or would we be wanting to replace that?
Hmm, well, we had talked at some point of replacing that with a pickup, even just a used pickup. Just to do the running around with and stuff and, you know, the, the replacement for that was the, the low pro.
And that would, what would you go to salting with?
Again, you know, if we had a, a smaller truck, even a box sander, you know, just for salt. I mean, it only takes like a half a yard of salt to do the cabin hill and stuff, you know.
The salting is pretty minimal, yeah.
Right.
About the replacement of that, of both of those rig with a five fifty style truck with a flatbed in it? Um, the thought would be to put a, a s- a sander in the back in the winter and with the, with the chloride tank fit on it in the summer.
Right, but it, you know, again, it would have to be something a little heavier than the five fifty. You know, you know what thousand gallon is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep.
The five fifty is just not going to hold that.
Right, we can carry about five hundred gallons of water with a that size chassis with the, with other stuff.
Yeah.
So I know there's, there are trucks that are um, you know, a bit bigger than a five fifty. I I don't know how Ford, Ford designates them, but.
Right, and.
Yeah.
There's, there's used ones around. I mean, it's just a matter of of having the authority to go find one.
Well, um, you know, if we decide to let the, you know, to take the insurance money for the forty nine hundred um and sell the five fifty, we'll have a chunk of money um and then we'll just start, start looking.
I mean, there's a, right here at the bottom of Bunker Hill in Hardwick, you know where that is?
Yes.
Where Adam Holberg parks his stuff.
Uh huh.
He has, he has a GMC there for sale for four thousand dollars. I haven't looked at it, know nothing about it, but it's that size truck that we would be looking at.
Right. And, you know, you, you and and Griz have the mechanical know-how to get something like that um. Big step either, whether, you know, you have somebody do it or you would be, you would have the, the knowledge to kind of ascertain what needs to be done to that truck to get it ready to, to go.
Right, and I mean, there's. The possibility to, not some, you know, if we did get a box sander to replace the, the chloride tank in the wintertime, there's a possibility that we may be able to make that plow frame fit as well.
That was my thought, if we went with a five fifty or similar style truck, we have a plow.
Yeah, yeah.
That's heavier, though, Paul.
No, I got it. Yeah, you were talking about the bigger plow, right?
Right, it's eleven foot plow.
This kind of morphs into our like highway equipment replacement plan, because whatever decision we make here, you're, you're setting up for your next purchase with that, a smaller truck, too. So we kind of need a whole picture, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
And we do have money.
Trying to explain. It may look like a lot of trucks, but it really isn't. You know, in the wintertime, we need them.
We do have money in the HERF fund, you know, if, if the sale of the two trucks is not quite enough or if there's repair work, um, whatever, you know, we could, we could.
Yeah, this stuff is down the road as well, so we might just as well sell this truck and take the money from it.
That's kind of my, well, we just kind of let the truck go to salvage and figure this other thing out.
Right.
We'll have some time this summer to find something else.
Exactly, and you know, we have enough to do.
Right, I I hate to saddle you with rebuilding a truck.
Right, right, right. Which, you know, at some point, you know, we can look around or whatever and and find something used, maybe, and just get by with the five fifty for now forever, while that lasts.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, how long before you'll need to be doing chloride, Greg?
What's that?
How long before you'll usually need to start doing chloride?
Well, we're spreading gravel and I like the chloride fresh gravel, you know, new gravel. Because it's dusty. I mean, as soon as, as soon as this stuff dries out, I mean, we've been really wet, but it's going to dry off one of these days.
I hope.
And every time we grade, it's dusty. So it'll, it'll be soon.
So does it sound like we're in agreement to um?
Take the money and run?
Take the money and run?
Yeah. I guess so. That's probably the best way.
And and we'll hang on to the five fifty for now and use it for chloride um.
Yeah.
Even if you had to get a smaller tank in the interim, are they terribly expensive?
Uh, I think they are, Paul.
Okay, I don't know. They're about a dollar a gallon.
That one, we, we put it in there and we drove the truck around, we test drove it around and it seemed to be, seemed to be all okay and it's going to work and it doesn't look too odd.
Just may not be able to fill it all the way.
It's just we can't fill it. There's no way we can fill it.
Okay, that's fair enough for a short term solution, I guess.
You know, three or four hundred gallons would do half a mile, maybe. I mean, if on a good day, he might grade two or three miles, we'd have to make a couple trips back and forth, that's all.
And I look at this as a short term solution. I do want to get this solved.
Yeah. So that's probably the best option, though, just, just to take the money and and we'll wait until we can solve it later.
Yeah, okay, all right. Does that sound good to you, Brian?
It does, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds, seems like we're in agreement. Um, so I will let um Susan Raul at Passive know um that tomorrow. I'll go send her an email.
Send us the money.
Send us the money, Greg.
Yeah.
And part, part of that money is it goes to the um, the wrecker bill, too, so it's not, we won't get the full twenty thousand, but.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so next on the list, um, so uh greater repairs. And I know that Ted Lane came and took a look at the grater. Greg, I'm kind of remembering you gave me some figures. Um, I have a, but you could, again, you could probably explain um what Ted found and what he's uh suggesting uh for work on the grater. I'll, I'll give the floor to you for this square.
Well, there's a, a few things that need to be repaired. There, there's a couple of pistons leaking in it. The biggest thing is the, the circle where the blade turns, where the moldboard turns. That's, that shims and and guides in it. And those shims and guides need to be, the guides need to be replaced. That needs to be re shimmed to tighten that up. Hasn't been done for, oh, four or five years. And it's, it's time to do that.
So that. He also talks about an oil change.
Right, transmission will change because he rebuilt the transmission about four years ago there.
Yeah.
And the oil hasn't been changed in it. I'd rather have him do it because, you know, he'll be able to tell, you know, more than we would ourselves, you know?
That's the oil in the transmission you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So you guys couldn't drain it?
As far as I know, the final drives have never been changed.
Right. So that seems like something that you could do on a rainy day and then take an oil sample for him, couldn't you?
We could do that, but he that, you know, it costs money to send an oil sample in, too, but. He was the one that rebuilt it or had it rebuilt and did the work. I just felt more comfortable having him do it.
You have any idea of price?
That was part of the.
Well, the, the price I'm looking at was uh five thousand seventy-nine for the cylinder repairs and the blade, oil and filters, and then thirty-six hundred in labor. So it seems like it was pretty steep.
Yeah, and he called me back and told me that the five thousand was down, he made a mistake and it was down to like thirty-six hundred or something like that.
For the labor.
There's also, I didn't change anything because there's also the heater blower motors need to be replaced and he didn't have that on that quote. So that's going to be some expense as well. So it's going to be somewhere in that, in that number.
That's something you couldn't do either?
Not really. They're, they're under the seat. I mean, we could do it, I suppose, with it. You know, without, it'd be so much easier if he did it because he's done it before, so. But the whole seat, the whole interior has to come out of it.
Well, with those numbers, my thought would be we'd want to have another person look at it and give us another quote because we're well into the almost ten grand range of repair.
It'd be, it'll be way over that if Kat looks at it. I don't know of anybody else that works on Caterpillar. Ted is, Ted would be cheaper. Like, I can't think of anybody else that works on Cat.
Yeah, I know Ted, Ted is sort of the go-to person to to do this work, too.
Oh, he'll be, he'll be cheaper for sure.
And the uh wear ring is worn out or is it something that's coming? So because when we talked about the grater before, we kind of thought there wasn't really anything wrong with a couple of minor things.
Uh, I don't believe ever saying that. That's, that turntable has been loose for a few years. It hasn't been done for. It was done when I very first started in twenty thirteen.
So that's just tearing it apart and re shimming it or replacing stuff?
Replacing that stuff. There's pieces underneath it that, that kind of like a brake caliper, Brian?
Yeah.
That that glides through. And the, the guides in there are getting worn out and they can be re shimmed and there's uh every other one, I think, is a guide and the others are shimmed.
Yeah.
Now, is there a way to get a price breakdown of what all this stuff, because the price we got just gives a flat out parts? It doesn't give us a breakdown of what each thing costs?
I can see if I can get that.
That would be helpful.
Quote from, he got a quote from Caterpillar, so.
Okay, yeah, because it'd just be helpful to see what, you know, what we're paying for each thing, that's all.
Parts and labor.
Because he's got it broken out parts and labor, but it doesn't really say what goes to what.
Yeah, I can see if we can get that.
Okay. That would be helpful to me just because to make a good decision, because, because things like changing the oil, it seems like could be done in the shop there. Um, although it may not be convenient, we could take an oil sample if they needed to, just if it saved a lot of money. If it didn't save a lot of money, then I would agree with you not to do it that way.
No, we can do it. That's no problem.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, just so we have a comparison, that's all, because I don't want to saddle you with a bunch of work and there's no real savings, you know what I mean?
All right. And, you know, that's, he's there, why not do it?
Yeah, just because I don't know what his shop rate is, if he's seventy-nine dollars an hour or whatever it is. Some of these are that high, plus mileage and whatnot.
Right, I'll get, I'll get that, I'll.
Yeah, we just get a breakdown of where the hours will and and the parts, the parts cost.
I'll see what I can get.
Perfect, thank you. At least that's my opinion. I'm not speaking for the other two.
Yeah. No, Ted's going to treat us the best of anybody, so.
Sure, I believe that.
I, I can, I can get those parts and I can get prices right from Cat.
Or maybe he has them already, can just email them to us, because it looks like he's already put something together.
Yeah, he must have his prices.
Yeah, yeah, so it shouldn't be simple to get, is what I'm thinking.
I mean, I, I, I think, you know, now that we, we're going to stick with the old grater, you know, we, we do need to keep it running and and keep it um, keep it repaired, so.
Well, I, I think I remember giving you guys an estimate of ten thousand and, you know, this is under, actually.
That's good.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing that. I just want a breakdown of the cost, that's all, so, which he should be able to have.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure he does.
We'll get a breakdown and and look at it again at our, maybe hopefully at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Make a decision, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, um. So, you know, we've, we've talked, um, the next item on the agenda, and maybe we want to, is to skip over this, but I did want to just have it on the agenda. You know, we've talked about um, you know, with the truck replacements, the grater, you know, and any, any piece of equipment, just trying to work out a, a plan, which, you know, the best laid plans of mice and men and all. But I'm trying to start thinking um down the road, long term, with our HERF fund, um, you know, just trying to come up with what we, what we need um. And coming up with a, a plan so that, you know, we can at some point get to this kind of golden space of actually having all the money we need to replace something, which is, you know, probably will take a while, but. Um, I don't really want to spend a lot of time on that tonight, um, but I just, um, I think that's a great idea. I mean, we've talked about it before um in, in years past of their, you know, the HERF schedule. It's been put together a number of different times, is kind of addressing that. But uh, you know, I think we need to, to start thinking about what trucks need to be replaced, when, what with. So if we could just start thinking about that and and, you know, maybe there's some comments tonight, which would be fine. Just, I think, you know, for the, a number of select board meetings, maybe we can spend, you know, a certain amount of time kind of working that out, discussing it and and figuring out what we, what we want to try to do.
Yeah, well, they're just, the biggest thing, they're just going to start getting more and more expensive.
Right. And in what way do you mean the?
Repairs and.
Repairs, yeah.
Everything. I mean, the longer you keep them, the worse it's going to be. It's starting to show up already.
Yeah, yeah. I know Tom Fadden mentioned that to me with their, you know, when Hardwick kind of tried to work out this replacement schedule that, you know, they, they found the longer they, they used to replace trucks every ten years, I guess. And they found that the last three years of that, they were spending quite a bit of money in repairs. So it just, it became obvious to them that they needed to replace them. They was actually spend less money re- replacing them than repairing them in the long run.
Yeah, I don't think the argument is so much of, of replacing. It's, it's, our funding is getting to where we can do this at a reasonable time interval without having to borrow the money. And there may be some pain involved in getting there, just so we're, because we're paying a lot of interest right now. So we may have to work through a solution that may take a few years to do um so that we're in a lot better place for future replacements.
Yeah, I, I know what Hardwick did when they were trying to get this in place and it, it is working for them now. They had one year where they went before town meeting. I think they requested a hundred thousand dollars to put into their um equipment replacement funds so that they could get to that spot where they could buy something outright and not have to deal with um the, the interest for the loans. Um, it was a one, one-time thing, you know, that would be an awful lot to ask of people in Woodbury, but maybe we could ask for something less. And again, I'm not saying that we should do that. I'm just saying that that's what Hardwick, you know, I was told what Hardwick did and that may be something that um, that we could try on a smaller Woodbury scale. That just, just a thought.
The trucks aren't any cheaper, Mike, in Woodbury.
That's true. Yeah, just our pockets aren't as deep. That's the problem.
The thing to do that is to get them on a list and then write down when you're needing to replace them and what that replacement cost is going to be. Then you divide that out, that total cost of each vehicle over the replacement cycle. Put that at the end of the column and then that'll, you add that up and that's what you got to put in the bank every year. Put that at the end of the column and then that'll, you add that up and that's what you gotta put in the bank every year. On top of whatever you're making for payments. That's the pain you gotta, we just did that with the fire department and it, and it resulted in us reducing the uh, fleet size by one vehicle to get the, uh, payment down to where it was manageable. It was not pleasant, but it's manageable.
Yeah, yeah. So, um.
At this point, they own all the vehicles.
Yeah.
No, no, we have mortgages on, uh, the loader and one dump truck, right?
I'm talking about trucks.
Yeah, the two, two of the, yes, that's correct. One dump truck mortgage and one, uh, loader mortgage, I believe we've got.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a mortgage on the low pro.
Yeah, right.
Both dump trucks are done.
Yeah. And of course their warranties have run out too, that's the other.
That's the problem.
But, you know, maybe, um, you know, Paul, with what you, you guys at the fire department have learned and, and, um, trying to set that up, um, uh, you know, maybe we should assign you a kind of coming up. See what happens there.
Well, the real rub becomes a replacement schedule and I don't have a good answer, cause, cause Greg's right, at some point you get to the law of diminishing returns with the vehicles. They start to cost more uh, than what they're worth to, to keep on the road. And I don't know when that is.
And then the downtime is what really hurts us. I mean, right in the middle of a snowstorm and a truck breaks, you know, it's awful.
Yeah.
And now we've got one less.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's, this'll continue to be, uh, on the agenda and we'll, you know, kinda let's move, try to spend a little bit of time each select board meeting, um.
I'll work and see if I can get something together for the next meeting to look at. I know there's a start to one I have and, uh, really you just gotta determine the cycle for each vehicle, how many vehicles we actually want. Sometimes that money number can help you figure out how many vehicles you can afford. Uh, but that's a decision for us, for the voters to make.
Yeah.
You remember, Michael, when we had to borrow Stowe's truck?
Yeah, I do remember that. Yeah, that was.
You know, that was just the five fifty down.
That was a five fifty, uh, yeah, yeah.
And we had the same amount, same amount of trucks then, but.
It does make it more stressful for the road crew when, when you're gonna snowstorm and a truck breaks down and, you know, how do we, how do you deal with that?
Thank God Stowe got us by.
Right, yeah.
I'd like to mention something. Uh, a few years ago, when Elizabeth Thompson was on the board, she had a pretty slick, uh, uh, kind of, uh, Excel spreadsheet of the, all the existing equipment and the lifespan and from year to year. You might wanna try to check with her to see whether that's something she.
She had that when I started work, yep.
I have, I have, I have paper copies of that and then, uh, Skip Lindsay kind of updated that some, um, also, uh, so we.
You have that in the Excel format or is that just a paper copy?
It's in the Excel format. I, um, the, the, uh, her fund that, um, Elizabeth put together, I think I only have that as a paper copy, but I might have it, um, digitally also, but the, the one that Skip did, I do have that.
Send that to me, cause then we could work on that. We could put that on the next agenda, cause with Greg's input and whatnot, we'll put the dates down and we can just see what the numbers come out.
Okay, and I, I could scan the one that Elizabeth did if I can't find a digital copy and I can scan that and send that.
That was a pretty good plan that she had going. I don't know whatever happened to that. Why it got discontinued or?
Well, what, what happened from my experience being on the select board is that the select board didn't really adhere to.
You got to follow it and fund it.
Yeah, the funding for it. And there was, there was one year when a significant amount of what should have been put in was not put in.
Like, you can't do that because you'll always end up behind in the future.
Right, yeah, so, um, yeah, so.
It's kinda one of those pay me now or pay me later things.
Yeah, it wasn't followed, so. And that's, you know, that's an issue for, you know, we can, we as a select board can put that together and then whether a future select board, six or seven years from now, you know, honors that and, and tries to keep following it, that's, you know, that's, it's up to them, so, um, but, but we, still a plan is a plan and.
Send it to me, Michael, and I'll try to have it polished up, uh, by the next meeting and then we'll look at it. Once, if we're, we all sit and agree to the dates and times and the whats, then we can put numbers to it.
Okay, I'll do that. Um, anything else about that? Brian, any, any comments?
Nope, nothing there.
Okay, all right, so, um, let's see, the, uh, summer work plan, um. I know, Paul, that you, you had mentioned that you would like to see a little bit more berm work and, um.
Yeah, that was my only question. We kinda wanted to put a priority on berm removal.
Yeah. Do, do you have any thoughts on that, um, either?
Wouldn't do whatever.
Okay.
It just, when we do berm removal, it takes everybody.
Okay, yeah.
And so it cuts into, you know, everything else, but when we do it, I mean, it's just everybody's doing one thing.
Yeah.
Just basically a three, three-person job.
Yeah, dude, in some areas it's possible to get rid of them with just the grader. There's some areas that don't look too bad.
Yeah, but it, the more you keep doing that, the wider the road gets. You know, if you're just pushing it over the bank. To me, it's a lot better to just pull it in and truck it off.
I know, um, the road survey, um, there were some, and some roads that, um, were designated for, you know, quite a bit of berm removal. I could, I could dig that out and, um, and see, see which roads might, do you have any roads in, in mind, Paul, that, that you've noticed? Or Greg, uh, you know?
I haven't driven around that much. Just looking at the survey, it's about ninety percent of the road. So if we're gonna solve something that has that much of an issue, we gotta get on it and make some headway every year, that's all.
Well, a lot of it, you can only do one side and most of it's against the ledges and.
Sure, but we can do what we can do.
Do the other side, but.
Yeah. Um, well, I mean, we could try to think of, should we?
The county road, county road, Cabot Road, East Still, some of East Still, some of that's not too bad.
Yeah, some of the more traveled, traveled roads.
The county road and the Cabot Road are the worst ones.
Why don't, why don't we, um, designate those then?
On the list, didn't I give you a list?
I do, it looked like most of the berm removal was in West Woodbury. There was a little bit on the, on the county road.
Yeah, it needs it the worst up there.
Yeah.
Was, West Woodbury?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All I'm just saying is, is we just should be focusing on that. Again, just my opinion, just because that's what our, uh, our, our road thing is telling us, you know, from the state.
Yeah, there's, there's some other things we have to get done first, but we can do that.
Sure, I assumed it would be something over the summer type thing. And then the second thing, reading, reading through that is as much of it that can be done while they grade, do that, and I don't know what that entails. It looks like if there's not a lot of grass, you can grade that gravel back in the road. If there is, you gotta haul it away.
Yeah, grass, you know, even just sod with no grass.
Right, right, but if it's just gravel, like my road, you did a lot of work on it. He just grabs that edge and pulls it in, it's all just gravel right now.
Right, right. And that's what it will be after we.
Sure, yeah.
Berm it, but that sod and stuff just has to be.
Correct, no, that's what it says in the guidance too.
Yeah, just, what we do, we suck it in with a grader, pick it up and load it, load it in the truck.
Haul it away.
It goes, it goes away, but it entails all three machines and three people.
Okay. Um, and then I know that, see for brush cutting, I know Paul had some questions about that also. I know it's, it seemed like some of the roads that are designated for that are, are, you know, just small roads like Willow Road that just goes into a few houses, um. And, you know, we, Lynn, um, Callison put together a, a brush cutting list for us, um. I don't know if I've sent this to you or not. I think I did, but, um, Greg, I don't know if I sent it to you or not, but there might be some.
You know, we're in trucks every day. We're the ones that get slapped in the mirrors and slapped in the windshield. We know where to, where to cut, you know?
Uh-huh, yeah. I'm sure who that is.
I don't know.
All right, so.
Most, most anywhere, if you look when you ride around, you see the trees that have the ends clipped off. That's from hitting trucks and mirrors and all that stuff. Those are the ones that have to go.
Uh-huh. So those are, that's, that's the ones that you've picked out and, and the, the work plan that you made for brush cutting?
Right.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that bother us when they're plowing. They're laying in the road when it snows and all that stuff.
So again, it was just our focus and again, Brian and Michael going is, is working on these berms and as much brush cutting as we can get done, along with your regular grading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can pick up if they disagree with me.
You know, just, it's however you want a lot of the time. I mean, all the ditching would have to stop and all that stuff.
Cause we had kinda thought we would do a lot less this year, right?
What's that?
Well, talking to Michael and, uh, Brian, we had talked about we'd probably do less ditching this year because of it, that our focus was gonna be concentrating on uh, good road grade crown and, uh, dip berm removal and brush removal.
Yeah, well, what, whatever you guys wanna do. I mean, sooner or later that comes, shows back up.
Uh-huh. Well, that, you know, that is what we talked about, I mean.
Our big, our biggest enemy is water.
And that's the problem with the berms, is that when they're not getting them off the road, it's washing and making a mess, the same as the no ditches, so we're kinda up against it.
Oh, we, we do berm removal every year. I know, it's just a matter of how much you wanna do.
Uh-huh, yeah. Well, I know there are some ditching projects that need to be done.
Um, we need to finish the grant first.
Right, that, that's the Shardier Hill, finishing the bottom of the hill, yeah. Um, for the better roads, for the.
How long will that take you, Greg?
Oh, at least a week, Brian, probably.
Yeah, that's depending on.
We gotta finish it and stone it. Um, we got some finagling to do to a culvert there for driveway that the landowner wants to buy another piece and add it to what we put there, so.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm thinking a, a week probably, maybe a little bit more.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay, all right. So, any, anything else about the work plan at all?
I'm good.
Okay, Brian?
Nope.
Okay, all right. So, um, road commissioner, um, we, we've been talking about this for a bit, um, and, uh, and, and I guess, you know, maybe it might be good to just, um, kind of review that, the thinking on, on why we're thinking about a, a road commissioner position or, um, or a roads highway supervisor per, uh, position, um. And I know, Paul, this is, this is something that you've been thinking about. You might be able to better, you know, better explain it than I could.
So we discussed this last spring, or actually last fall, I wanna say late last fall, because we're all finding that, um, because we don't have a road commissioner, we have de facto, the select board is the highway supervisor and in charge of all the road maintenance that takes place. Um, uh, per our discussions, and again, Brian and Michael, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but we're just finding it a struggle uh, for us to manage that. We all work full-time jobs and trying to, to do that and finding it really difficult. Plus, I think it's frustrating for Greg to have three people contacting him about, um, what, what goes on, uh, complaints and whatnot, so. Um, we had talked about and we actually did, uh, put some money in the budget toward having a road commissioner potentially, if someone was interested in that position, to oversee the, the, uh, supervision of the highway. You know, and that person would take the complaints and then talk to Greg and work with Greg on scheduling all those type of things. You know, there's a lot more to it. I sent along a job description, uh, idea.
Yeah, yeah.
And we did have someone that expressed an interest in doing that. That's the critical note.
Yeah. Brian, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, that's just about right.
Okay.
The history of these is years ago, the road foreman or road commissioner was an elected position, then it got, I sent you guys the history of it through the league there and around nineteen, uh, they put it back in as, uh, appointed and they were elected to appointed, then back to elected, back in, and then back to the point is ten and seventy-two, so it's been a position that's kinda bounced around. Uh, and then that person is the one who reports directly to the town manager, the select board, and in this case, it would be the, the select board.
Yeah.
Which would relieve us from having to do the day-to-day, you know, stuff, a lot of the stuff that you're doing, Michael, and other things like that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And, you know, my, my thought on the road commissioner is, again, it would kind of relieve me of some of, of pretty much all of that, I would hope, or some of it anyway. You know, I don't mind dealing with the grants and stuff like that, but, um, I know lots of times people ask me questions or, you know, like when Lynn comes to the select board meeting and has these different, um, issues, um, it's, I don't know the answers to.
Right, me either, and that's frustrating for everybody.
Yeah, so. So we're thinking of, of someone who could kind of deal with, um, people in town who have issues, um, and work with the road foreman to, you know, like this work plan or whatever, just, you know, what, what things need to be done, when, um, you know, with issues with equipment, um, you know, it, it just seems like it could be a helpful, and it would really have to depend on the person, um, that, I would definitely feel pretty strongly about that. It has to be somebody that can work with, uh, town residents, um, and also work with the road crew, um.
Yep.
In a thoughtful way.
Somebody with a good background and.
And it would kinda take some of the, the heat off you too, Greg, in a way, as long as, as long as this person is somebody that the road crew can work with. That's, that's a concern of mine.
Longer would the complaints go directly from us to Greg, it would go to the road foreman, or road commissioner, excuse me, who would take the heat or whatever's happening.
Yeah. And, and this would be probably pretty much a, a part-time, it wouldn't be a full.
Yeah, that's what we mean. We have to talk to the person that's interested in work out what that is.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, do you have any thoughts about that, Greg?
Oh, I think everybody knows how I feel about that. I don't think I have to explain myself. I mean, that's, that's why I gave you that paper, Michael.
Uh-huh, yeah.
I mean, uh, VLCT has been through all this with different towns. I don't think Woodbury is big enough to need two positions. They came up with one position, the road supervisor, and made that the position that some towns follow, cause some towns have a foreman, some towns have a road commissioner, some towns have both. They came up with this position as a way to avoid some of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, that's, you know, I, I guess that is something that we should probably try to figure out, do, you know, um, what, you know, coming up with, I know Paul found, uh, a job description for conflict for road commissioner, you know, we should figure out, you know, whatever we call this person or this position, um, you know, what is it that's needed to, to, um, in, in this role to, as kind of a, a person between the, the road crew, you know, working with the road crew and also, um, working with, uh, town, town residents who have issues or, um, just another pair of eyes on what needs.
And that's, that's the idea, that, cause we, we don't have the time to do this, nor should we be expected to in our position.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he would work with Greg and then he would report back to us at the meeting.
Correct, that person would come to the meeting and my idea, and if we got concerns, we deal with the road commissioner. And Callis uses a similar position to this.
Right, yeah. Yeah, um, so I think, you know.
Cabot just went through, Cabot just went through all this and it lasted about three months.
Well, and I understand that there's an op, wait, Greg, sorry.
It created a whole bunch of anxiety and all that stuff and the guy ended up getting done anyway, so.
Yeah, we should talk to somebody from over at Cabot and see what the issue was over there.
But they're back to the way it used to be and everybody's back to being happy again.
I remember reading about some of that in the Gazette about a year or so ago, I think it seems, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't heard of that.
Just happened, I think, this winter that it finally, they switched over last year, yes, but it finally came to an end this year.
Yeah, it would be good to hear, you know, what.
Is that we have a person.
The wrong person gets too much authority and then all of a sudden, everything changes.
Well, the problem is they still have a boss, because we're the boss of that person. Everybody has a boss.
Yeah.
My thought process in this is to.
It didn't work out for them, put it that way.
Yeah, and that may be the case with us, but, um, so you kinda know where I stand on it. I kinda think it's a good idea to try. Uh, my recommendation would be to meet with the person that would like to do it and have the. Uh, my recommendation would be to meet with the person that would like to do it and have this conversation with them.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I, I'm thinking that we should really try to. Come up with just what we want. I mean, we should come up with a jo- a job description that works for Woodbury that. Situation that we're in. And really, if we're going to be looking for someone to fill this role, we, we really should put it out. You know, to see what interest there is beyond the, the one um, person that has expressed interest in it right at the moment. We. We should, um, you know, do a search, um, however, however involved that is. Um. And I, I would prefer that process that, that we, you know, have looked for possibilities.
Towns that have done it and see how the other towns have worked out, the ones that have kept it or the ones that have gone away from it.
Yeah, we could do, we could do some calling around for towns that are somewhere in size, but I, I think, you know, the first thing that we really need to do is. Come up with a, a job description for a road commissioner or a highway supervisor, whatever we want to call it.
Or road foreman.
What, what do we actually want that person to, to do and, and how, you know. Figure that part out.
Would we do that at our next meeting or did you, would you want to meet in a executive session to try to figure out some of that stuff or?
No, we, we, we really couldn't meet in an executive session to figure out a job description for a road commissioner. We could, you know, we could work on that. You know, I know Paul has ideas about what's needed, you know, we could work, again, here, I, I am giving you more work to do, Paul, but um.
Yeah, I might think of that in two weeks. I mean, we do have a person that's written in and expressed interest. I think it would be who was to sit down and meet with that person.
Uh huh. Um, separate.
An executive session thing.
At a select board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we could do that at our next meeting. Um, I mean, I do have some. Issues with that person or just some concerns, I should say, they're issues. I have some concerns. And it would be good to be able to talk about them. Um. With that person in, in a non-public setting. Um.
Yeah.
So, uh, okay, well, um, we can plan that on that for, it'll be a little tricky. Next, so here we are, you know, we're still having to do these Zoom meetings. Does that person have the ability to, to?
Aren't they letting us meet with groups up to ten now? Doesn't include us.
Well, I mean, we could meet, we could have a special select board meeting. In executive session, we could do it at the library community room and still keep our physical space.
And that's what I would recommend, just to talk to this person in, in between our meet, next meeting.
Okay, um. Why don't we plan on doing that then? I don't see why we couldn't, we could do that, that safely. Um, I would ask that everybody wear masks. Um, at this meeting, unless we get some kind of, um, you know.
That's pretty much the guidance now. Everybody's wearing a mask.
Right, yeah. So, um, as long as we do it safely, um. And keep the physical distance, the, the community room will allow us to do that. The.
Yep.
The town office won't.
Yep.
So, um, okay.
Do you want to set that up for the next week or so?
Yeah, I will, um, I'll, what, what would be a date that would work? I guess we should probably think about that.
Uh, anything but Friday at one or two, Thursday at eleven right now. I mean, only two other meetings I have this week. Next week, it's the same thing.
Right.
And I'm good most anytime.
Okay, I have a, my, now that I'm doing some work and my schedule is a little more restricted, um, let's see, I could do it. Let's see, I could do it on a Monday morning, Tuesday, Tuesdays are an open day and Fridays are open days, so. And then Wednesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, okay. What time would everybody prefer?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, all right.
AM or PM? Eight AM, Tuesday, the what?
It'll be the fifth.
So Greg, would you like to be at this meeting also?
Um, I don't know. Maybe, Michael. You know, I have some real concerns about this stalking and stuff that I, that I talked to you about.
Well, why don't you?
That would be an executive session material.
Misrepresented and all that stuff.
Okay, well, we could, that could be a part of this meeting also. Probably, it probably should be before it goes, goes any further.
I mean, we're all sick of it.
Yeah, okay, well, the select board needs to hear that. Um, so that'll be a part of this. We could either have it in two stages or this. Person that's interested in being.
I think it'd be better to meet with the board individually over uh, two different people.
Okay, all right. So, um, let's say what the, let's say, Greg, that we will meet with you at eight. Eight AM so that you could get on to whatever you need to do for the day. And then we'll meet with the other person, um, afterwards.
And when is this?
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday, the fifth.
Tuesday, the fifth, yeah.
So the first one will be at eight and the second one would be what, eight thirty, nine?
Uh. How much time do you think, how much time would you want, Greg?
No, I don't think it'll take long.
Right. So, yeah, maybe eight thirty.
There's, there's some serious, serious issues there that's documented and everything.
Okay, all right, well, um, we'll, we'll give us.
You know, it's, it's to the point where. It's, it's harassment.
Okay, all right, well, let's, let's hear about it next Tuesday. I mean, I know, I know s- some of it already, but um. Brian and Paul don't. Anything else uh about the road commissioner at all?
Can I just ask if you guys have considered maybe some kind of a liaison position that could. Do some of the um, dealing with the public and the road crew and all.
That would be one, that would be, that would be part of what the road, whatever we call it, the road commissioner would be doing. It would definitely be in a layout, a liaison position.
I'm just wondering if that position could be, um, because it seems like the guys kind of know what they're doing. So if there could be somebody to fill in the gaps, to take that space between the select board and the road crew. And not have to be as involved as, you know, directing them, telling them what to do, but maybe helping them write work plans. You know, things like that, supporting them rather than overseeing them.
That's, that's exactly what this position would do is what we're looking at.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not looking for an overseer. We're looking for somebody that can be supportive. So, you know, obviously, they would have to be able. To work with the road crew and, and also to be able to deal with, um, the public. So it would take a, it would take a fairly special person, I think, to be able to do this.
Her name's Laura.
Yeah, there you go, Laura.
Lost my other part-time job, so I'm ready.
Okay, right. So, yeah, so this is something still in the works. Um, we'll, we'll proceed. Um, so. Uh, just very briefly, uh, the Amesworth Road, um. There's a lot more to it than I'm going to talk about tonight. Uh, the main issue for the town is the fact that, um. That old house that's been sold, there's been a crew working on, um, making it. Uh, a li- a livable uh house. And what they've been doing, um. At least last week, is parking right in the road so that uh, people who live up the road couldn't get by. Anybody wanting to use the road couldn't get by. And when a person would stop to ask them if they would move the truck, they were. Very severely verbally abused and, and threatened. To the point that, uh, one person in town on the butter, um, of that property, um. So I think, I'm pretty sure he spoke to Brian. He also spoke to me and he has threatened that the next time that. He goes there, he's going to be packing a gun. Um, and that's what got me really nervous, so, um. Uh, and that's, that's the kind of the main issue for, that, that we need to be concerned about is the fact. And I haven't, I, you know, I drive by there pretty much once a day, twice a day. And, um, I did see trucks in the road last week. Um, this week I haven't seen any yet, but it's only Monday. So I, yeah, I called, um, I called the Washington County Sheriff's Department to talk about this. I also called the state police. And, um, the Washington, I asked the Washington County Sheriff's Department that when they're in Woodbury, if they could at least go down. And look at the road and if they see a truck parked in the road blocking traffic that they stop and either. Give the people a citation or at least a warning.
Good idea.
And, uh, when I called the state police and mentioned the person involved with these, uh. Uh, verbal abusive, but, you know, threatening to, to beat the guy up and throw him in the ditch kind of thing. And I mentioned who the person was doing this. The state police told me to not have anybody in town deal with this uh person. Um, and then if there was somebody parked in the road that the state police need to be called, and they would send the nearest trooper there as soon as they could. So, and to, to me, that is the more, um. You know, the issue of parking in the road is one thing, but the, the kind of threatening, um, aspect, uh, with the people involved is, is. As probably a greater concern for me anyway, um.
Yeah.
And the state police sound like they're willing to, you know, get there as soon as somebody gets called, so, um, I think for, you know, for any of us. And I've spoken to one of the property owners, um, above the house, um, who will often, you know, is working at home. Home now, but if there is, he's on the fire department. If there's an emergency that he needs to get out, um, that road needs to be clear so that he can get there as soon as he can. And I, you know, so I've mentioned to that property owner, I need to call the abutting landowner to talk to them about this situation. I haven't done that yet, but if we see anybody, um, with a truck fully parked in the road, truck in a trailer, whatever. Um, don't deal with it yourself, call the state police. Um, and the trooper that I spoke with, um, the most was a trooper named Trooper Marion. Don't know his first name, but he's aware of the issue. He's also let the other, um, troopers in the Middlesex barracks. They're aware of it and it sounds like they would get there, you know, as soon as they could. You know, they don't want anybody from the public or anyone, town officials, uh, dealing with this person. He has a, a pretty. Um, well, they don't want us dealing with it. They know his record.
Yeah.
So that's, that's all I really want to share. I also talked to Ryan McCall, who is the enforcement. Um, branch of the, um, Department of Environmental Conservation. He has, um. Our zoning administrator called him about issues with that house, um, and property across the road. Um, and, um, he has, um, he will be making, um. A site inspection, um, originally, um, again, he kind of passed that off onto somebody else and, um. They didn't want to go there.
No kidding.
So he, he's probably going to be the one that will go. He's going to get, last time he went a few years ago, he had a couple game wardens.
That's good.
So, um, that's kind of in the works. Um, uh, right now, we can't do anything about that house, because no one is living in it, but there are some. Issues that he's aware of for that house, so, um, and that's pretty much all I want to, want to say about.
Okay.
For now. Are any, any thoughts at all? And again, we shouldn't mention any names, although we probably all know who I'm talking about.
Yep.
But, but no name should be mentioned if. I tried to have, I thought we could maybe do this in executive session, but the LCT, um, advised me that it really wasn't a subject. For executive session and, and as long as we discussed it, not using any names, that we would be okay in a public setting. Any comments from anyone at all?
No.
No, oh, okay. Um, so Greg, would you like to give us a brief, um. Update on this, on the road situation in town and, and then we'll, we should move on to some other stuff here.
Uh, today I held like, uh, two loads of gravel up on the Cabot Road and we've got some of that graded. We're going to finish that up. Hopefully tomorrow, the weather's not supposed to be too bad. Tomorrow and Wednesday, maybe on the Cranberry Meadow and East Hill. East Hill is still pretty wet. Still spongy, the clay and stuff, so. That may be, you know, we might not get there this week, but. Definitely Cranberry Meadow can be done and we're going to finish the Cabot Road in the morning.
Okay. And the mud up on East Hill, it hasn't really turned to muddy ruts. It's just the kind of.
Right, it's just spongy.
Spongy, yeah.
It's been pretty good. I mean, we haven't had really any deep ruts or anything anywhere. It's, it's come out pretty gradual, but East Hill, the same as last year's last again, and it. It's hanging on, so I haven't pulled posters down or anything yet. Because it still is kind of loose up there.
Okay.
They could probably come down most anytime now.
Any, any questions for Greg at all about?
And one, one comment, if, um, you might not be aware, there's a, quite a heave on the county road, uh, just past Cranberry Meadow. Before you get to that house where the guy has the pile of logs. I don't know if they put a couple warning signs up at. As we almost hit that with the fire truck the other day and luckily we slowed down before it hurt somebody.
When was that, Paul? Because that's all been graded.
Okay, it was Saturday.
This last Saturday?
This last Saturday, yeah. There's quite a big bump there.
As in the day before yesterday?
Correct.
Really?
The grading looks like it's stopped at Cranberry Meadow. It didn't look like that hill had been graded. But anyway.
It was up on the hill?
No, 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 you know, you go past Cranberry Meadow and there's that house that has a pile of logs on the right and there's a garage across the road. He's got tractors and things there. It's just before that house on the corner. If, if we can't get it graded, just go put a couple warning signs up.
I, I assumed it was graded all the way to lockdown.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't have time to get.
I didn't know that.
Okay, yeah, I was, I was going to email you and I forgot about, if you don't have time to get there, just throw, if they could throw some warning signs up, because we almost hit that at thirty-five miles an hour. That wouldn't have been good.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't aware of that. I assume, I thought it had been graded all the way to, to lockdown.
Yeah, no, no. Even, yeah, if you can't get to grading it, just put some signs would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll get over, we'll get over there either. Is it something we can just knock off with a loader?
Well, I don't know, even if you don't, it just, even just mark it so someone won't hit it like we almost did.
Yeah.
Might not, it might be frost. I don't know if it's fixable right now, you know what I mean?
Right, and that may be what happened too. It may just popped up.
Yeah, no, that's right where I think a culvert is. So if, even if just a couple signs, just so we don't.
Yeah.
Hit it.
Yeah, or cones or whatever.
Something, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of it.
Nope, I didn't figure you were. That's it for me.
Okay, Brian?
Nope, nothing else.
All set, okay. Um, great, well, thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
So, um, the next thing on our agenda is a, a grand list deadline extension, um. And I can read you briefly what, um, a letter that was sent to the, the listeners from the Department of Taxes, um. It's, it says basically due to the COVID nineteen impacts on operations, an extension of all towns to August fifteenth, twenty twenty is hereby granted. And applies to all, um, acts mentioned. Um, and then there's another extended date. To September fifteenth, twenty twenty, um, for the, for getting, you know, the grand lists in and. They would like, um, the, you know, this was sent to the listeners and, and they would like to, the, the select board to. Improve those, um, approve those extensions. I mean, we usually grant extensions anyway, because it's hard for the listeners with our. Large camp owner population to, to get a lot of properties, um.
Yep.
You know, crazed in, in time for the August fifteenth date. So, um, this, this extension, um. Would go out to, um, to, would extend the date till September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Uh, are we, is that okay with everyone on the, for this, on the select board?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, um, so I'll just, you know, for the, for the record, I'll make a motion that we. Approve the extension for the, uh, grand list, um, being sent into the states until, um, September fifteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so I. All right. Okay. So I.
Delay when we can send tax bills out?
I don't think, I'm, it's going to mean that they, they really need a delay, but I mean, they always need a delay till maybe the middle of July.
Okay.
State is doing this backwards this time. They're suggesting that everybody get an extension so they don't have to deal with all these different, uh, requests.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, so moving on, um, Susan, um, Martin, you know, we, we, I think it was last fall, we were talking about the, um, changing and revising the zoning permit. So, um, Susan has done some more work on that. And I, I think she has a, uh, a final copy that she would like us to review and approve. Susan, are you still with us?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Um, do you, would you, do you have any comments at all for us to consider?
Yes. And, and, and Bob, the zoning administrator is here with me.
Oh, good. Good. Okay.
And what I have done is I have taken the application for zoning permit. That was, uh, on a typewriter and made it into the 21st century.
It wasn't on a typewriter.
Oh, yeah, it was. Come on. But anyways, um, it's the same one that you looked at in November. Um, except for it took out, um, the short-term rentals language. Uh, that I think the, the consensus was that it needed to go through the planning commission. So that type of language was, is out of this application for zoning permit. Now, the main reason why I really want this to be done, because I can hear the frustration from my husband about, um, about the cost.
About what?
The cost. Uh, uh, right now it's going through a lot of applications. A lot of applications. And I, I believe I, I asked the select board to approve the 10 cents per square foot for new construction. And I, I honestly don't believe if there was ever a motion that was made to approve. But what I'd like tonight is on page three of the application, and I hope you all have a copy of it, looking at it.
I don't.
Be approved. Okay.
What, Susan, what I would like to do, I, I contacted VLCT about this, asking them if they would do a quick review of it. And they, they said that they don't, they, they don't really, they don't really do that, but they suggested that I send it to the regional planning commission. So, um, what I would like to do is, um, just send.
Michael, Michael, we have done this.
You have done.
We have done.
Okay, okay, good.
I, I, this town is losing money because the, this select board will not approve the new, uh, rates. All right. My husband says to calm down.
I have a buddy.
I, I didn't realize that, um, the regional planning commission, I know Skip Lindsay, who's the chair of the planning commission, said that he thought this was okay. Um, but, and I didn't realize that it had been, um, reviewed by the regional planning commission. But if it has.
Everybody. Yes.
If it has.
Everybody.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Michael. I'm just really frustrated. I'm just really frustrated and, and I shouldn't be, I guess.
Didn't let us know about. We always put in the square footage of the first floor. And if we called it a two-story, it automatically added it up. Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. So we had to do it ourselves. And in that, uh, that square footage, uh, you know, that doubles the, uh, the amount. And there was one place who just, just gave a permit for 32 feet by 40, 48 feet.
Can I get in the middle of this for a moment? It sounds to me like, uh, Bob, Bob and Diana and Susan, it sounds like you three should get together and kind of work out some of this and, um, and come up with.
I thought it was all done. I thought it was all worked out, done, but now we're getting something else.
No, it wasn't all done. It was thrown out. Yeah, Susan did throw it out several months ago, but it just never got followed up on. And I don't, I wonder whether the planning commission has, is approving, is, you know, making this proposal or whether it's just Bob and Susan.
It's Bob and Susan basically, but Skip Lindsay did look at it and okayed it. So.
I am, with Diana, I am only asking the select board to approve the rates, which they legally have the right to do. I'm not particularly asking them to, to re, to approve the, um, the language, because the language really hasn't changed. Except for a few housekeeping rules. I, 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 I feel like you're fighting us on this. I'm just trying to bring more revenue into the town.
Yeah. So we can say the zoning administrator.
Oh, my goodness.
Whatever. But I agree, Michael, 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 I agree. Uh, Bob and me and Diana, um, and maybe, maybe even Raj should get around a roundtable uh, with masks on and, and discuss this. But in the meantime, I would truly like, and I would like to make, have you make a motion that the select board approves the rates found on page three of the new zoning application permit.
Okay. Well, then let me ask.
I would suggest if you really want to, that a lot of these, last year, probably more than half of them, wouldn't even have come up to the $25. So, um, if you want to hit up somebody who's building a big building, you know, for $200 or $300 for a permit, that's a choice that I think has to be discussed, but, uh, but to get a permit for $3 doesn't make any sense either. So, you know, maybe you should at least have a $25 minimum.
Yeah.
For things like sheds and garages and, uh, porch extensions and things like that.
Okay.
Because there aren't that many new buildings built in Woodbury every year. It's an average of one or two, maybe three in a big year.
Okay, good. Diana, could you allow the select board to discuss this?
Go ahead.
So, Brian and Paul, any thoughts on, on what we've heard?
It sounds like it needs a little bit like with the minimum fee added to it potentially. Um, and we might, I, I'm not opposed to raising the fees, uh, but I do think that it might be wise to put it out for some public comment before we did it.
You don't need that. By law, you don't need to, a public comment on changing the rate.
Right. I understand that, but it affects everybody.
And like my, my, Bob's trying to hold me down, but he is looking, I mean, he's spent every single day for the last four weeks on the phone, talking about permits in Woodbury.
No, not just Woodbury.
And, well, he's doing, he's, he's doing Calis now, but, but in, in Woodbury, he has had a lot of discussion. And the town of Woodbury is losing money. If you guys don't approve at least this, what I have now, and then your next meeting, we can come, come again and, and make another change. But it's imperative that, that you make these changes now before there's another influx of permits coming into the town. I'm sorry, you don't want to make revenues for the town, then we'll, we'll just table it.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that we just have questions about it that, and, um, so I'd rather feel pretty clear and confident that what we're doing is the, the decision that we make is the right one.
And it's, it's a finished job, but it's been six months. And I think, uh, there's been some permits and, uh, there's probably going to be some more and it, 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 uh, might as well finish it up. And there's not that much that's really being changed.
It sounds, it sounds like you're close and, and, um.
Oh, there's not that much that's really being changed. And we just wish we could get together on it and finish it. And I thought we were done.
Yeah. I, I don't know how the ball got dropped on this, but, um, you know, I guess it would have been helpful if, if there were still issues that you felt needed to be resolved that, um, that you brought into the select board. And, you know, I, I don't, I can't remember why it, it wasn't pursued further, but, um.
I mean, I'm willing to, if this is the final product, I would just like to put it out to the public and we would vote on it at the next meeting. That would be my opinion. Which is two weeks away.
It's only going to have a big impact on somebody who's actually building a new house. And they're going to, instead of, or a big garage, instead of $25, it'll be a hundred or $200. So.
Yes. I just don't want to have someone mad at me because we didn't say what this change to the application was, because it's not really clear in the morning. If we give it a couple of weeks, let people look at it and we'll vote on it at the next meeting. That would be my, just if you're happy with the way it is right now, that just delays it two weeks.
Yeah.
I, I think that, uh, just the, like Diana suggested, uh, having a minimum, uh, so there aren't $3 permits.
That does sound like a good idea. Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
And, um, I like.
The law gives you. The law gives you, Michael, the right as a select board to approve the rate.
That's, that's great. But I, you know, I kind of agree with Paul. There's the law. And I also want to make sure that the public is aware of these changes. The public meaning the town residents. And if there are any issues that they have a chance to speak to them, that will, that will be what would happen in any kind of planning process where, you know, there are different public hearings, you know, if we post this down at the, in the usual places where we post it, the whole thing. And, um, if there are issues, we'll hear about them. We, we could even have them be addressed to you and Bob, um, if you'd like. To, to me, that would be to be thoughtful to the people in town.
If they get that out tomorrow, whatever form they want, we'll review it at the next meeting and any comments that we get, and then we'll act on it.
And you could just hang on to the permits, Bob, until a decision is made, if you want. Fine with that.
We're only talking about two weeks.
Yep. And if you want to meet with Diana and kind of hash out some of the things you were discussing, that's fine by me too.
Well, I think, yeah, we should, yes.
We just gotta, if you want us to vote at the next meeting, we just gotta give people a little time to look at it. So the sooner you get it posted, the sooner we can act on it.
I know where to find her.
Okay. All right. And, you know, Laura can help, um, get it posted. Uh, Brian, did you have a comment?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right. So, does that sound like a plan? We'll make a decision two weeks from now.
Long as we get it out. We gotta get it out this week though.
Yeah.
Is suggesting that they post the whole thing on Front Porch Forum or something?
Yes. And any, any of the forums that we use, Front Porch Forum, the website, the, um, Facebook, um, page that the town, some people in town have. Any way that we can get it before the, the town residents.
Just make sure that they understand that the, the fee change. That's, I'm not concerned about the application. It's just the fee change, letting people weigh in on it.
What, what another? The only thing, hello, Michael, the only thing that I really, really want to happen is that this zoning permit be posted on our website.
Okay.
Absolutely.
We, we're getting a lot of calls from people out of state, Connecticut, New York, New Jersey, asking us, can, can we download this from your website? It's like, uh, no.
You can mail it.
It definitely should be on there.
And a mail, gee.
If they, they mail it to them or?
Diana, we need to put this on the website.
Oh, it should go on the website.
Yeah.
Okay. Can, do we, does it sound like we have a plan? Can we move on?
I, I'm good.
Yes, thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you, Susan and Paul.
Thank you for your work on this, Susan.
Thank you, Susan and Paul.
Do it tonight, but we, we will.
Well, thank you for your, your patience. Thank you very much. Love you guys.
Okay. Um, so, um, next item agenda is, uh, town official appointments. I asked Laura to post, uh, the different town official, uh, positions that are still empty. And we, um, got a few bites when, when she did that.
All right.
We got some response, two responses about the health officer, um, one response about the constable. Um, and then also a response for a representative to the Central Vermont Fiber. I haven't heard back from the people I, and I spoke to these folks, uh, sent them information about, you know, especially with the health officer and the constable. I sent them what information I knew was available about what those positions entail. Haven't heard, heard back from them yet. So I don't know what that means, but I'll contact them again in a little bit. We do have a person that's very interested in, in being the Woodbury representative to the Central Vermont Fiber, um, Board. His name is Trevor Thorpe. He's recently moved to Woodbury, um, and he's kind of the IT person for, um, the Vermont. Uh, I don't have the email, but it's, um, the, um, it's not a bank, but it's the Vermont, um, where they lend you money and X, sort of like a bank. Um, it's a, a state. I'm blanking out on the name. It's too late, um, for my brain to be working very well. But anyway, he's very well qualified and I think he would actually be very helpful to that entity. So, um, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Trevor Thorpe to be the, um, representative for Woodbury to the, uh, Central Vermont Fiber Board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll do a follow-up with the other folks and, um, just see what their, what they're thinking. Um,
Now, is this the position that, uh, Skip was?
Yes, Skip and, Skip and, Skip was the representative and, and Susan Martin was the alternative. And then when Skip, um, resigned from the, being the rep, um, Susan became the rep. Um, and then she has also stepped away from that position.
All right. Okay.
And this fellow is ready to, to take it on. So that's great.
He's a new one. Okay.
And then the last thing on our agenda, other than.
The other two we'd look at at the next meeting, maybe when they got some more.
I, I hope to have, um, you know, the constable, um, I don't want to get into it too much, but that's.
But the health officer.
Yeah, the health officer, um, one person, once they heard that someone else was interested, said, well, let that person take it. And, uh, so I, I will get in touch with them, um, probably later this week and just see what they're thinking.
Who was the person that was trying to be the health officer?
Well, um, I don't know, I, I don't know if I want to publicly say their name until they're actually sure that they want to do it.
Fair enough.
There were two people involved. One of them, um, they both lived in Woodbury for a while. So, um.
Yeah, maybe I'll call you tomorrow just to see who it was.
Yeah. And what I, what I mentioned to, um, especially the one person, I mentioned that, um, you know, I sent them all of the material that the health department has about being a health officer. Um, and I gave them Jay Copping's name. He's the Calis Health Officer who helped us out with the, the residents down on Dog Pond Road that, that you know about, Brian.
Yep.
And I also mentioned, mentioned you. So, um.
Yep. So the Dog Pond Road is done?
As far as I know, it's done.
Okay. I haven't heard anything lately, so I didn't know.
No, I, I signed some final papers with Jay, um, a while ago.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, I've driven by there and kind of looked and there are people living in the house now, but I think the trailer, um, I think the trailer is empty.
Finally. Yep.
Yeah. So the, the last thing on the agenda is a local emergency management plan, and I'm going to be very brief about this. We need to renew that yearly and the date to have it, that work done is the May 1st. I've been, spoke to Chance about this and he made some updates, but there isn't a lot that needs to be changed. In fact, there's nothing really that major that needs to be changed with it, just, um, some contact information. Chance did some, made some changes and I have, um, trying to get, uh, in touch with, um, the school principal and, um, Don. You know, Larry was the main contact person and he's retired now. So I just need some information from, from them as far as the school is concerned, and then, um, we're ready to, to send it in. It is something that I could, um, once I get that information, I could sign it, um, and, uh, send it in, um, or we could, we could wait and, and, um, Or we could, we could wait and and look at it at our next select board meeting. We'd only be a few days late and in the past, we've been many months late, so.
Comfortable with Chance's work and so I would be perfectly comfortable with you signing. Do we need to have a motion to approve it?
I guess we could make a motion that that we approve my signing the the plan once we have the final bit of updated information.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so hopefully, you know, we'll get that information back from them and I'll make that change and sign it and send it in. Send it in. That's it. Motion to adjourn? Anything else that anybody wants to bring up? I guess I should.
Just a quick question that we might want to reach out and look at the guidance to see how much like by the next time we might be able to have a real meeting.
Right, yeah.
Changing every week. So my opinion is if, once we get to where we can have a meeting with social distancing, we go back to meeting at the library.
That sounds good. I I would like.
If we can do that, if not, we'll do this again. It's okay, but.
Yeah, it's worked. It's worked, but it's not.
Soon as we could get back to our regular meetings, I would like to do that.
Okay, now I know I get notices from a lot of different, and you probably do.
Yeah.
From different state agencies and.
It's a little confusing right now as to who does what, so.
Yeah, I know.
Probably legal be the best choice for us to ask what we can do. And I haven't really seen something that cleared us yet, but I'm hoping by then maybe we'll have a little more, but maybe the for sure the meeting after that.
Yeah. I hope so. On May fifteenth, this is the last date that, you know, for for the.
I think that's going to get sometimes, there'll be some. Yeah, yeah, there'll be some restrictions even after the fifteenth, so.
Right, yeah. From what I've been hearing, you know, they may open things up again, but they they still will want people to practice the physical distancing and the.
Large groups will be a problem, things like that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, as soon as we can get back to an actual meeting in a place, I would like that, despite. This has been fun, but.
This is fun, but I'm I'm over it.
Yeah, okay.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, if anybody's listening, if anybody needs a face mask and they don't have a face mask, please let me know and I'll get them face masks. I probably put porch here anyways, sir.
Yeah, I know. I know Ellie needed some and she put a thing on Front Porch Forum and there were many people in town that replied and we have a nice selection now.
So good.
You'll need more than one. You got to wash them every day, so.
Right, yeah. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.